As was mentioned. Oh, there you go. As was said, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on my county webpage and the Facebook page. For those who were not able to attend, if you should want to have them find out what we were talking about tonight. I think yesterday may have been our final Board of Supervisors meeting for 2021. But I can assure you that our office still has a lot of work to do the remaining calendar year and beyond, of course. It was a privilege to chair the Board of Supervisors this year. And I look forward in 2022 to with a great deal of optimism about what we can do in this very challenging year. In fact, 2021 has been one of the busiest years for our office. I'm in my ninth year on the county board. As we worked with colleagues and community members for fire recovery and homelessness and roads and public transportation, groundwater sustainability and the county's suit against PG&E, just to mention a few. Tonight, we're going to hear a presentation about the status of the renovations for the Boulder Creek Library that were funded in large part by Measure S, which passed in 2016 to support new libraries in Felton and Capitola, as well as the renovation branches throughout the library system. Of course, Felton and Boulder Creek were included in that. We're also going to hear about the local management area management plan or LAMP. Local area management plan that will guide our work on septic systems into the future, which is very important for the Santa Rosa Valley. And will play a big role as we continue our rebuilding after the CZU fires. Before those presentations, though, I want to briefly give you an update on some other topics before I introduce our speakers tonight, and I'm going to start with PG&E. As many of you know, PG&E removed thousands of trees from private properties in the valley and the Bonneville area after the CZU fire. And after CAL FIRE and the Coastal Commission filed notices of violations against PG&E. For those, they conducted, you know, how they conducted their operations. But the Board of Supervisors then voted as well unanimously to file a formal complaint with PG&E, PG&E's regulator, the California Public Utilities Commission. In order to settle that case, PG&E just recently agreed to remove the wood and debris they left behind after the fire, which was really great. Some impacted property owners should receive a notice now from PG&E and how to opt in for that program. So be on the alert to look for that. The county has also created an enrollment form on its website. It's important to sign up soon because the program expires on January 31st. And this will be mentioned a couple of times throughout the program tonight, I believe. JM, who you've just, JM Brown from my office, will put a link to that form in the chat right now, as well as information about the two upcoming town hall meetings hosted by PG&E and the county to answer questions about the Wood Hall Program. Those virtual meetings are scheduled for 6:00 PM on December 14th and 6:00 PM on January 12th. But you do not have to participate in the meetings to qualify for the Wood Hall Program. As part of the settlement, PG&E also agreed to providing additional support for indoor community resource centers during future public safety power shut offs that have been particularly hard for our Santa Rosa Valley residents. On a related note to that, the Board of Supervisors just yesterday voted unanimously to make changes in our noise regulations related to generators. Our rules for making it, our rules that we had were making it too difficult and costly for folks to obtain those non-portable generators. And we know that they're, they're very important, more important than ever with these power shut offs by PG&E. And they're becoming more common, unfortunately. I really want to thank my colleague, Third District Supervisor Ryan Coonerty, for working with me on that item. It's a, it's a life or death matter for some people who might not need a generator in those trying moments that we've experienced recently. And also yesterday, the Board of Supervisors approved taking steps to modernize an ordinance related to our wireless communications. We know how important it is to ensure that all parts of our county have good communication and connectivity, and those changes will make it easier to situate wireless communications facilities. And I also want to mention that as the representative of Santa Cruz County on the California State Association of Counties, or CSAC, we have really, I have pushed this, as have many other supervisors throughout the state, to, to have more of the wireless communications and broadband expansion. It's a really big issue for every county of our 58 counties in the state. And it's particularly important for our mountainous areas like we have and some of the dead zones that we have in the Santa Rosa Valley. We also know how important it is to have safe roads. During our November Town Hall last month, we heard about the status of road repairs in the 5th District, which was hit hard by the storms of 2016, 17 years ago, as well as the recent storms. I'm pleased to tell you that last week, we won. And there was a group of us that really pushed for this hard, an important vote to the Regional Transportation Commission to steer $2 million more of state and federal funding toward fixing our county maintained roads. We have 600 miles of roadways in the county. And we're, there, many of them are in bad shape, through no fault of anybody in the county. It's just the, what we have experienced recently. For, for many years now, we've really needed more funding for our road system. And this additional money will help us address two critical emergency evacuation routes on Alba Road and Jamison Creek Road for our valley residents. I also might want to mention, too, that we've had very good relationship with CAL Trans. And every, every month on the Regional Transportation Commission, which each supervisor is, is a member or an alternate for him. And of 20, I just noticed that of 22 projects that were on the CAL Trans list, and some are years away, you have to plan far ahead. But 14 out of the 22 were in the 5th District or right on the district line. So we've been getting some really good attention from CAL Trans, and I really appreciate their cooperative efforts and their understanding of the need that we have. Two, two notes about housing and homelessness. I'm very excited about the proposal from our Veterans Memorial Building Team to house previously homeless veterans and their families at what is currently Jay's Timberline Resort in Ben Womack. I think you've read about that recently. The site has been purchased in a partnership with the Community Foundation and Santa Cruz County Bank. And it's my understanding that they're going to have another meeting this Friday evening at 6:00 PM at Highlands Park. So if you want to know more about that issue, it's a tremendous opportunity. I think they can house maybe up to 40, 40 veterans there. The people who, who, well, a lot of people need housing, but veterans should, should get it as much as anybody else. I'm really excited about that and very appreciative of that effort by them and the Community Foundation and County Bank. And also last night, I participated in another community meeting with our planning department about so-called tiny homes. Those are 400 to 600, sometimes mobile units that you can have. We know a fair number of folks, especially some among our fire survivors, are interested in building tiny homes, either for affordability or environmental, environmental purposes, reasons. But we need to develop a program aimed at, at the county permitting for a greener variety of these small dwellings. Where there's a lot of interest, I think we had, what, more than 50 people in that session last night. Last night, meeting dealt specifically with how we might develop tiny homes in rural areas with issues such as septic systems, which we're going to hear more about tonight as well, lot size and other issues. And if you're interested, JM, again, will put up a link in the chat to the video from that meeting. And if you want to look to see what we discussed that last night, that's, that'd be, that's open to you. And lastly, I want to offer my thanks to two very important community organizations who are helping us with the ongoing response to the COVID pandemic. First, Community Bridges has really stepped up for the valley by offering a COVID testing site behind the Mountain Community Resources Center in Felton Building. The, the testing is available by appointment or walk-in from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Friday through Tuesday. You can also make an appointment to be tested from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Depot Freight Building in Santa Cruz on Wednesdays and Thursdays when the Felton site is closed. But again, that Felton site, it's 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Friday through Tuesday, at the Mountain Community Resources Building in downtown Felton. And also to thank Community Bridges for partnering with our Public Health Department on this testing operation for the valley. And you can learn more about testing at Santa Cruz Health.org. Secondly, I want to thank the, a big thank you to our Santa Rosa Valley Rotary Club, which is hosting a vaccination clinic called the Vax the Valley from 3:00 to 7:00 PM every Wednesday at the Felton Community Hall. They have all types of vaccines available for first, second and booster shots. And in fact, I got my booster shot there last week and couldn't be more grateful to that we have a site in the valley at Felton for the vaccinations. So you can make an appointment at myturn.ca.gov. So enough of me. I, with that, I will turn over our first guest speaker, Damon Adlow, from our Department of Public Works, who will give us an update on the Boulder Creek Library renovation projects. I know that you've, I think everybody in the valley has looked at, or been in the Felton Library and the park, adjacent park. What a phenomenal addition that is, and this is just going to be as great. Also joining us will be Laura Whaley from this, our Santa Cruz Public Library System to answer any questions about programming of the Boulder Creek Library or anything in the library system for that matter. Then after the library presentation, we'll hear from our Environmental Health Director Marilyn Underwood and Marcus Johnson, head of the Four Leaf CZU Fire Recovery Permit Center, to discuss permitting for septic systems, which is our key ingredient in the rebuilding process that we want to really step up. At the end of that, after we have those two presentations, we'll open up to questions on a variety of topics, whatever you might want to ask. And thank you again for being with us, being with us this evening. And I'm going to turn it over to Damon and Laura, who will talk about our Boulder Creek Library. Damon, thank you for being here. Laura?
Thank you for having us and having me Supervisor McPherson. It's my honor to be able to present the Boulder Creek Library and the improvements that we've done on the building. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. I think.
And after Damon and Laura are finished with their presentations, we'll just go into, so people can ask questions right away after they have made that presentation. So whatever's on your mind, we can have a better idea. So please, thank you, Damon.
Okay, bear with me here, I'm not seeing it. Okay, sorry about that, guys. Can you guys see it now?
Yes.
You see my screen? Okay, I apologize about that. So again, thank you very much for this opportunity. As many of you know, this project has been in the works for quite a while. We did have some delays. We unfortunately had to rebid the project and then we had some COVID-related delays. But we appreciate the community's patience. And we will be opening the branch relatively soon. This is an aerial view, of course, of the site on Park Avenue in Boulder Creek. Again, my name's Damon Adlow. I'm a project manager with Department of Public Works for the County of Santa Cruz. I work specifically in the Capital Projects Division. And I've been working on several of the county's library projects. Here today, we have Laura Whaley, who's the regional manager for the area and then also involved in the project currently is Eric Howard, who's the interim director of Santa Cruz Public Libraries. And then also very involved was Susan Nimitz, who was the old director who recently retired. And a lot of the design, the design interventions, she had a lot of input in that. The architects for the project is Jason Architecture. The lead is Abe Jason, and then the project manager, Katie Stewart. They did the design and construction documentation for the project. And then we went out to bid in a traditional design bid build format, which is primarily how we deliver our projects. The low bid contractor for this project was CRW Industries. And we're really lucky to get them. They've been great to work with. They're a local contractor out of Scotts Valley. The owner there is Bill Burr. The superintendent is Nolan Burr. And the project administrator is Jill Haley. Just as Supervisor McPherson mentioned, this was primarily funded by Measure S funding. So in 2016, there was a $67 million bond measure for facilities throughout the library system, the county library system. And in general, the goal was to update the branches to create more flexible spaces, to bring them up to code, which is something that was a big, big portion of the Boulder Creek Library. Access to technology for the community. Flexible learning spaces and just flexible spaces in general. And then in this case, again, it was really driven by the need to update the bathrooms, actually, to make them code compliant, make it so they're accessible for our entire community. There's also additional county funding. There's about $30,000 in county library funds for the project. And then a big one, I do want to mention about $175,000 from the Monterey. Was basically from the Friends of the Boulder Creek Library. A big portion of that was a Monterey Bay Foundation grant. And there's also many community donations as well. And when we bid the project, well, we bid it twice, like I mentioned. But the second, the second time, I mean, just in general, as many of you may know, pricing, you know, to build, it's really expensive right now. So we structured the bid a little bit differently in that we had a lot, several alternates. So we could just basically afford ourselves a little bit of flexibility when it came time to award the contract. Initially, we didn't, we were really only able to award the base. But with the donation from Boulder Creek Friends, it really allowed us to kind of touch the entire interior of the building, which I think was, hopefully you guys see this, it was is something, a move that made it, makes the project kind of complete in my mind. And in a lot of the rooms, you know, it ended up being just additional paint and carpet. But to be able to kind of clean everything up, in addition to the big structural moves, was really important and to me, kind of makes the project successful. Another thing I'd like to add is a lot of the images that I'm showing here, we're about 95% done with the project. So the, the images of the after are still a little bit messy because a contractor was in there when I took the photo. So bear with me, it'll be a much cleaner space when you see it in a month and a half or so. Okay, so I'd just like to show the main room. I think, you know, the picture on the right is something that's probably really familiar for many of you. Can you guys see my cursor here?
Yes.
Can you see that?
Yes.
So I'm going to use that just to kind of, to navigate a little bit. The, the main desk was kind of pushed into the area. And so that kind of took away some of, some of the usable space. So what we did here is we pushed, pushed things back, pushed the, the main circulation desk back into the space a little bit more. And basically kind of gives, gives the main meeting room more, more of an opening. So another image, so we did like here, we pushed it back. This is going to be a circulation desk and hasn't received the counter yet. That's supposed, I think, maybe going in today, actually. And this will be the new circulation desk. Book drop in, in basically four locations, we have graphics on the wall and then new carpet. And then on the other side of the room, kind of basically from, from the view of the photograph, there was a large steel beam that was put in that again, opened up the entire space and then also made it so the, the bathrooms, we were able to get the required openings into the two bathrooms. Another addition to that is that we're also able to make it so the community room can be rented and then use the bathrooms and then lock off the library space, so another community asset. The children's room before and after, this is taken from the children's room. So there's a, we did a lot of acoustics, wall and ceiling treatment in this area. We cleaned up the space and then, of course, new carpet, new carpet, new paint. And then there's going to be new furniture that's going to be installed next week. This is a little bit of a close-up of the children's room with the new graphic on either side of the wall. The theme here from the architects was to create sort of a treehouse space. And I think they accomplished that with a new creative light fixtures. And then also just an opportunity for more kind of dynamic kind of use. This is an image of the community room before and after. This is something that, you know, we just wanted to make sure, like I had mentioned, to kind of touch the entire interior of the building. I think the community room is pretty successful. Basically cleaned it up quite a bit, and then we're going to be, have a large screen TV that we use, you know, more modern technology to have community meetings and other events. And then as well as, you know, just the usual, the usual kind of community room furniture in this space. This is an image of, so we did replace the fireplace. We went from a wood burning stove to a, or excuse me, a wood burning fireplace to a gas fireplace. Again, inset it a little bit more, so we have more floor space, a little bit more flexible. Little bit more of a modern intervention here. And I do want to know that you guys could see the masks that were around the, the wood burning fire, wood burning stove, excuse me. Those were removed. But, you know, we heard, we heard from the artist's family and we heard from a lot of the community that we wanted, they wanted those to be retained. So what we've decided to do is I've hired an artist, or excuse me, hired a framer to reframe these pieces, and now these are going to be mounted in the, in the adult reading room. And I just think it's a, it's just kind of a, a nice way to carry, carry on that history and that tradition. And then this is an image of the staff room. Again, I apologize for the kind of in-construction pictures, but I couldn't get the contractors to leave to take the photos. But hopefully you guys kind of get a sense of what it's going to look like. This space hasn't changed that much, other than new cabinetry, a little bit better kind of workflow. It's not shown in any of these images, but the book drop area and processing area is, is, has been designed to be a little bit more efficient. And then finally, I know probably not the most exciting thing, but I was glad we were able to include this in the project and we were able to redo the parking lot. Have more, well, up to code ADA parking, but also resurface the area and also identify kind of some of the problem areas. So hopefully, you know, this is something that's going to last, you know, many, many years. And then in addition, it's, I don't have a photo here, but I did want to say we did replace the tanks for the septic system. It's a hallway system, but there were issues with what we think was stormwater intrusion into the tanks themselves. So those have also been fixed and are refunded by the project. So I think that's, that's primarily it with my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Okay, let me see. Let me repeat the directions for asking a question. You can raise your hand through the Zoom app and we'll call on you. And then I'll be able to unmute you and then you can begin asking your question. Or if you're joining us by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. And then when you're called on, you can press star six to unmute yourself. So let's see if we have any questions for Damon about the renovations to the library in Boulder Creek. Let me see. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone there. Laura, did you, did you want to just add anything from the programmatic side in terms of any changes as well as the best estimate you might have for an opening date?
Best estimate for an opening date sometime late February. And we are planning a community party. We're hoping everyone comes to visit. We're going to have some performances from local artists, some activities for children. An introduction to the new renovated building is our goal and to have some fun with it. I think folks are going to love the new look. The Great Room, as we're calling it, which is the, the main room you enter in, is stunning. And it is so open that I think people are just going to fall in love with it. We are having an entire new staff at the Boulder Creek Library due to some retirement. So new faces, but they're old library people. So I think everyone will enjoy our new staff coming on. And we will be starting programs as soon as it is safe with the pandemic to do so for children. And we're really looking forward to getting back into the building and serving the community.
Great. Okay, and I still don't see any questions. So I think we're done with the library portion and I'll turn it back over to you, Supervisor.
Yeah, right. Okay, we'll move on to the, talk about the local area management plan that deals with septic tanks. And I will introduce Marilyn Underwood and Marcus Johnson, who I mentioned with their titles. But they might give their name and title as they present, but thank you very much for being here.
Good evening. Marilyn Underwood, Director of Environmental Health for the county. And I'll be followed up with, by Marcus, who's going to hone in a little bit more specifically on the CZU burn properties and the impact of the lamp. So, so first of all, just to give, I don't want to, you know, we had a nice, some meetings about the lamp. There'll be more meetings about the lamp because while the local agency management plan has been approved by the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Program, Quality Agency, sorry. We still have an ordinance that we have to do, bring to the Planning Commission, which we hope to do in January. And then ultimately to the Board of Supervisors, maybe February. And then, then the Coastal Commission. So it's not, we're not, we, we have a big, a big hurdle that we already passed. And it meant that most of what was in the local agency management plan, I'll call the lamp now from now on, is already in effect, but there are a few things that will not go into effect until the, we pass the ordinance. So why was it needed? The lamps were something we had to do under state law. State law was actually passed way back in 2004, but it took the state and, quite frankly, the environmental health directors were working with the state to roll out regulations, essentially our policy about how we had to develop our own lamps. It was at first very onerous what the state wanted the, the locals to do. And so we had a lot of fighting back with them. Finally, in 2011, the state ODS, what's called the On-Site Wastewater Treatment System. We used to call them septic, that was so nice, but now they're so fancy. Some of them, we really have to replace our language, septic with ODS for that one-site wastewater treatment system. So I'm going to call about ODS. The ODS state policy came out in 2011 and required every agency to put their own lamps together within a certain period of time. We did not finish ours on time here in the county. And so that meant back in 2018, we were told by the Central Coast that we could no longer accept. And so that meant back in 2018, we were told by the central coast that we could no longer accept, um, plans when the treatments, they needed to have an alternative or an enhanced treatment system for the septic. Um, so we could still do conventional septics if they could meet the requirements of a conventional septic. They had to reduce the groundwater separation. They had the setback from streams, you know, those kinds of things. But we weren't allowed to do it, review the plans if they had enhanced, needed enhanced. Those had to go to the state starting sometime in 2018. So with the passage of the lamp by, on October 14th, by the state board, yay, we now are accepting those enhanced, um, the plans for enhanced treatment systems back at our office. So why, so the whole purpose of this was because what they were seeing across the state where decisions for land development are made locally. But oftentimes you can make some, some, in some jurisdictions, there are some impacts that were being seen and including our jurisdiction. Um, some early land use decisions way back in the seventies and eighties, which made for these very small parcels in, especially in the, um, San Lorenzo Valley, which meant that septic systems were too close to our streams, too close together. And we did end up seeing, we, we were seeing things just like they were seeing in other parts of the state where our surface water was being impacted by septic systems. We have seen, especially during the winter, the San Lorenzo Valley can have pathogens coming down when they're starting the rainy season, uh, from, um, septic, uh, system or odds. Um, see, I can't, I have to train myself from odds. And we've seen impacts to our groundwater, both in the Santa Margarita and also this, uh, the mid county basin from, um, uh, odds. So the state said, no, we can't, we're going to have to start developing minimum standards for locals to put into their ordinances so that we don't see these impacts. Cause once you affect your drinking water, remember, we only drink water from our county. We don't import it from the hetch, hetchy or somewhere else, right? So we want to protect our water. And unfortunately, that does mean that in some cases, uh, the changes will mean that there's, um, more, more places have to do enhanced treatment systems. Uh, but there's also some good news. So I was actually going to show you just a few, um, uh, tables to hopefully bring that to, to, to mind. The first one I'm going to share is, I'll take a little time to explain it to you so it's not, hopefully you, are you seeing that? Oh, no, not quite yet, I gotta hit share. I think you're seeing a table, is that correct?
Yeah, you can see it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I can see it, yeah.
Um, okay, so actually the first one I drew up was the upgrade. So whenever somebody has, you know, a permitted septic system, but say that they have it permitted for a two bedroom and they want to make a three bedroom or a four bedroom, oftentimes they're going to be getting into what is called an upgrade to their septic system. And so I wanted to show you here was prior to the state policy, are us having to stop, take, prior to the state telling us we could no longer, uh, we didn't get our lamp in on time. We had to stop activity on enhance. This is the, so I'm going to walk through you. This is the, the distance from the septic system to a stream. Okay, so if you're in 25 to 50 feet from a stream, obviously very close. 50 to 100 feet or a hu- greater than 100 feet. In the old days, uh, 25 to 50 wasn't permitted. Uh, and it's still not permitted. So down here, so here's where, when the regional board, I mean, the regional, uh, yeah, board took over and from May 2018 till the lamp was passed in 20, 2021, they were not permitted. This is conventional system. And even when the lamp was approved, they're still not permitted. So nothing really changed there, right? I will say, our previous, under our previous system, if you were that close to the, to, to the stream where you had to put your septic system or your, your odds, um, you, as long as you had five foot separation, you could put in an enhanced treatment system in. Now you can see, if your, if your septic system can only be put in a place 25 to 50 feet from a stream, you could not put it in under conventional and you cannot put it in under permitted, uh, with enhanced. So that's one of those changes. Similarly, now let's imagine that you could have to put your septic system in between 50 and 100 feet. Before all you had to do it, be able to demonstrate that you had five foot separation. That's the, the distance below the leach field and to the groundwater, right? And groundwater during high groundwater season. Well, you, if, as long as you could demonstrate five feet separation, you could put a conventional system in. You can see now that's not permitted. Okay, you'd have to put in, if you only have, uh, basically you would not be able to put a conventional system in. If you're 50 to 100 feet from the stream, you have to put in enhanced treatment. And even with enhanced treatment, you have to have two feet separation, okay? Now greater than 100 feet. In the old days, you could have three foot separation. Uh, even if you're, now remember, this is again, not your house, but where your septic system is. Uh, as long as you had three foot separation, you could be greater than 100 feet away. Now you're going, your separation to your groundwater is different based upon your soil percolation rates. And you can see none of them are three feet. If you have very slow soils, you have to feed five feet separation to have a conventional system. Uh, slightly slower, you need to have eight foot separation. And for you, those of you that are up in the San Lorenzo Valley, uh, if you have very slow perking soils, you are not permitted to have, because you are a nitrate concern area, you are not allowed. And your soils perk one to five, you will not be able to put a conventional system in, even if you're greater than 100 feet from a stream, okay? Uh, you can, on the other hand, obviously put in an enhanced treatment and you will need two feet separation. So this is just an example of what I'm showing, that the lamp does impact you. And you can see this is all around trying to keep the, our, our septic systems away from our streams. Where obviously it's something we don't want to impact. And also we need to have the groundwater separation so that we don't impact our groundwater. Now, I do have similar tables that I'm not going to show you there for, for new development, but also repairs. The repairs one is the one that's kind of applicable to the CZU burn area. So I could go through it if, if people want me to at the time when Marcus is talking. But overall, um, there is, there's a lot more, there's a little bit more, um, flexibility that we wanted for people to do repairs. So it's not as onerous as if you wanted to do an upgrade. For instance, here, there's more, I guess, I'm trying to say is the state would not let us, um, be more lenient for a new development or developing a new parcel or development, doing an upgrade to, to a septic system. But for repairs, they wanted obviously to people to repair a system that's not working. So there's a little, little bit, little bit more leniency, but there's still some issues about having to address setback from streams as also an, and having some issues around groundwater separation. Now, the other thing I wanted to show you that's actually kind of good news that came about as the lamp is that the lamp, when we did the lamp, we also got away from, um, so sizing of your leach field. In the old days, in the old, um, before the, uh, current lamp was put in place, if you had slow perking soil, soils, and let's say you only wanted a one bedroom, um, uh, house, you'd have to have 500 square feet of sizing of your la- leach field. Um, now you can apply, there's a different approach. You apply application rates, I won't get into a whole multiplication thing. But having done the multiplication for you, that would allow you about 208 square feet of a leach field. So you can see half the size of the leach field is needed under the current, uh, lamp. So a lot more, um, ability to maybe find that, um, location on your, on your parcel. Similarly, even going up to four bedroom, you can see at four bedroom, we required 875 square feet of bleaching, each field now it's 375, okay? And this is just straight, to be honest with you, using the most conservative application rates, uh, in developing these numbers. So it's, it's fairly good news. Similarly, uh, we did the most conservative approach here with six to 30. So these are, you know, the percolation that, that's, the percolation is the rate that the water, if we made a hole and put water in it, how fast it goes down into the ground. And that's really what a percolation test is. Um, in the old days, uh, in the previous, prior to the lamp, you needed 600 square feet for a one bedroom. Now it's 475, even choosing the most conservative flow rate within the six to 30 range. Uh, and you go up to four bedroom, you could see we needed 1,050 square feet of leach field. Now you need only 844. So again, this is very good news, uh, just straightforward, taking the most conservative application rates. Uh, for the 31 to 60, we've done a little bit of accommodation. What we did was, it is true that if, if we took the application rate for 60, um, minutes per inch, we would have gotten higher numbers, but we decided to use the 55 minutes per inch. So it's a little bit of a less, less conservative, but you can see it in the old days, it was 900, now it's 899, uh, 1125, 1079, as you went up to a 10 bit. So in all cases, even up to a four bedroom, you can see there's a slight increase in sizing. Uh, but for the most part, they're all comparable or lower. Um, so good news in the sense that at least, you know, there's still going to be the stream and this, and the, and the groundwater separation issues. But as far as the size of the leach field might allow you to put it somewhere farther away from a stream, right? Just because you need less space. Um, so in that sense that it, these are some good news. And this does, this is also going to be helpful, we think, to people in the CZU burn area as they go forward. Um, so, so other than those issues, the other things I wanted to just mention that there is an issue, uh, seepage pits. Um, if somebody needs a repair, uh, first of all, there are no more seepage pits. If you do an upgrade or a new development, you're going to have to do something other than seepage pit. Um, but, um, seepage pit repairs, um, would require enhanced treatment. Um, also for replacements on soils over 30, um, a slope of 30%, you will need a soils in a geologic review, uh, that is going to be required. Um, we are going to be, um, putting in place, uh, already, there's certain, there are people out there that are qualified, uh, there are contractors, they have a license to be able to put in a septic tank. Uh, unfortunately, under the new lamp, they will not be able to submit applications for design. Uh, they will have to be certain qualified professionals. And again, this was a state minimum standard thing as well. Um, and then the other thing that will come about when the ordinance is passed is, um, that we are proposing to have a, uh, onsite, an odds inspection required at time of sale. Um, and that will be required of the seller, uh, to disclose it to the, any prospective buyers. We will be putting, we're not going to do it at the county level. We're going to be setting up a training and training qualified professionals to do those inspections, uh, so that the, um, potential, the buyers understand what the system was permitted for and how it's been, uh, what kind of condition it's in at the time of the sale, proposed sale. So I think that's, with that, I will, um, stop and just, uh, turn it over to Marcus so that he can focus a little bit more on what the lamp has meant for, um, the CZU burn area.
Thank you, Dr. Underwood. Um, so I'm Marcus Johnson, I'm down there in the, uh, RPC helping people out and navigating all these super complicated regulations. Um, in the chat, I've, um, put up the link for these, how to schedule appointments with RPC. The second link is how to look at your, um, EH records for your parcel. Um, that's one thing that's very important on CE rebuild is to see what environmental health permits you've had, size of septic. Um, a lot of the tables she, um, she just showed have that information about perk, perk rates, size of your leach lines, depths to figure out, um, complete size of leach lines. Um, with that being said, the lamp, um, on that secondary table has given a bit more help on the size of leach lines as the leach lines are getting in certain perk areas getting smaller, which are, are going to be helping some people with maybe doing a, adding a bedroom to their system, uh, adding use to their system's square footage. Um, so that's going to be quite helpful compared to the previous requirements where we have a lot larger bleaching area. Uh, the setbacks are still going to be quite a bit of an issue. The secondary thing is we're working together to merge the standards to help with some of the technicals, like using 55, 57 versus the 60, um, to keep those repair issues together. Um, also with that, with the approval of the lamp, we can approve the plans for enhanced treatment onsite, um, which will mesh together with the building review times. So we're looking still about seven to 10 for both, um, enhanced treatment and building. So there won't be that lag time of a few weeks to months from it going to the state. Um, the biggest, the biggest thing to look for is, is to check your, to check your, your documents, see what you have. Um, call us, we can go over with you, um, how the, how the breakdowns of the perk test, the size of your system, what is permitted? And how that is dependent on what you want to add to your system or, or move your house, or however you want to re-rebuild, we can help you with that. Uh, but it's imperative to, to, to kind of pull your own documents, see it, we can help you dissect it and go over the information and give you options with that.
Thanks, Marcus. I don't know if you want to see if there's phone, I wanted to actually correct myself. I said seepage pits are not allowed for upgrades and it's not true. Uh, they're not allowed for new development, but if you have a CPH pit and you want to upgrade, you will need to, it's, uh, put in enhanced treatment. Similarly, if you have a reparative seepage pit, you also have to put in enhanced. So just wanted to correct myself about that.
Okay.
Great, uh, any questions, uh, from, um, folks that they might have about rebuilding process and septics or odds or whatever?
Yes, supervisor, we have a question from Bracken Andrews. So I'll ask you to unmute yourself. You should be able to do that and ask your question.
Yeah, I was wondering if there were any exceptions to leach fields, if they're vertical. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to put my head around a vertical leach field, Marcus.
I can't think of any, other than when you hit them over that 30%.
Is that what you mean by, what do you mean by?
Suppose you're close, suppose you're close to a creek or a river or something and you want to put in vertical leach fields on your property so you make, so you can qualify. I'm just wondering about that.
So I think you're, uh, more like a pump up system, maybe pumping up to a higher or further away?
No, I'm talking about actual drilled holes where they put leach fields in vertically.
So the pipe, the pipe goes down vertically, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Uh, I do know we have trench, the depth of trench is a big issue, um, that has both addressed in the state odds policy and I believe addressed in ours as far as depth of trench. Was so even though it, I can imagine that, you know, when you want to go vertical, then the depth, the trench still has to, I think, be maintained within, I can't remember if it's, uh, four feet and 10 is the, I think, the maximum. Is that, is that correct, Marcus, how I have that?
Yeah, um, so you'd be pushing into the, the separation of groundwater if you went vertical.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Bracken. Uh, let's invite some additional questions on this topic. Um, just want to remind you too, if you, uh, want to ask a question, you can raise your hand in Zoom as Bracken did. Or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine to let us know you have a question and then you'll press star six to unmute yourself. So just, uh, scanning our participant list here and I don't see any additional questions on septic or odds, excuse me. Um, okay, all right, we'll give folks just another second or two in case they're struggling with the phone or trying to find the, um, the area to raise your hand. It's in the reactions area at the, uh, on the lower toolbar for Zoom. And again, star nine, if you joined us by phone. Okay, I'm not seeing any additional questions on that topic. So supervisor, I'll give it back to you for general questions.
Yeah, finally, uh, thank you, uh, thank, thank you very much for the presentations, um, very detailed. And, uh, are there any other questions and general subjects that, uh, folks may have that, um, they'd like to address? Uh, either the panelists or myself? Do you have any questions that, uh, anybody wanted to ask?
Uh, we see, uh, Bracken has his hand raised again. I'm happy to call on him again. I just, we'll give somebody else a shot first if we saw any hands go up, but, uh, no, all right. So Bracken, we're going to you again.
Uh, my question's for Bruce. I saw that you had a meeting with, uh, Senator Laird and the SLV fire chiefs.
Right.
And I was wondering if you could cover that a little bit, uh, for us?
Sure, we, um, it just, that was great with Senator Laird, who has just been a fantastic advocate for, uh, our county. Of course, this is his home county. Um, we, uh, wanted, you know, the fire, the response to the fire and, uh, what is needed. And I think, um, what, what they said is capital equipment to fight the fire, but more, it's more so or just equally cer- certainly, uh, to, uh, to prevent fires by, uh, taking care of the underbrush and so forth and, and doing more than that.
to, to prevent fires by taking care of the underbrush and so forth, and doing more than that, that field, which the state is doing. But they, they discussed about just how, what the basic needs are, but I would say that is probably the, the two main points that were brought up, Jam, you were there too. But I think it was, how can they get more capital equipment, you know, state providing some more air power? When the CZU fired it, as we know, there was several other fires in the state, and it was very, very trying, so we just want to get more of that equipment close by that we might be able to address if we have another fire of that magnitude. And, and then, but preventative efforts too, that's really what, what we really were, were looking at. I think those are the two main points we looked at.
Okay, thank you.
That was really a, a great meeting to have, too, with all the fire districts and the new Cal Fire Chief as well, he was there as well.
See, we have a question here from Rob Bremer, Bremer, excuse me. You should be able to unmute yourself.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you. Mine are more related to traffic issues, though, I do have, I did have a septic question, but that actually got answered in the presentation, so I appreciate that presentation. I live right on the edge of Rolling Woods, off of Graham Hill. And our roads are kind of starting to fall apart, and I went on the website and saw I could send an email to Public Works. But, you know, we probably have fifty, seventy-five, a hundred potholes now on Rolling Woods, Montclair, Treetop, all the roads in there, and I wonder if it's possible to get somebody out from Public Works to just take a look at it. Plus, one significant, or not significant, but a sinkhole that was repaired maybe ten years ago, that's sinking again. You know, not just have them throw some asphalt, but a couple of the intersections are really deteriorating. And, and supervisor, if you wanted to come out, I'd be happy to host you too, or Jam, or somebody.
Yeah, I, I will do that, we do have a list, we have hundreds of millions of dollars of need for roads. But I'll bring this to the attention of the Deputy Public Works Director, Steve Wiesner, who's a Ben Lomond resident, as a matter of fact. But I will mention this to him, we, we do have a list of, of roads, and there, there's, it's a long list of repairs that need to be done. I can try to get an idea of, from him, what those were, and if I can, we'll, we'll get back to you. If you can just give us your name, number and so forth, and get, get to us, or write me at the, at my county office. But with your concern, and I can try to get back to, I will get, I will get back to you to see how quickly you might be, be able to get at it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, some of it is just throwing some cold patch on, but some of it would be nice if they could get scheduled down the road where they've been throwing cold patch on the problems for twenty years. It just multiplies. And then one other one, is I saw Public Works is doing design work now on guardrail replacement on La Madrona and El Rancho. You have one guardrail that's been down, that the county finally came out and put some portable barricades up. That's actually on the fog line of the road, that white line that's on the right edge of the road, and that's on La Madrona, right after you dive under the freeway from El Rancho. So if you're coming from Positempo exit to El Rancho, and then you go under seventeen, and you're on La Madrona, right at the top of the hill. And that's a danger, somebody's going to cut a tire on that, and you're going to have major liability. Public Works, it's been that way for a couple of years now. And I'm glad, I'm assuming it's finally going to get replaced, but it would be nice if they at least push it back off the road.
Okay.
And you want me to email that to you?
Yeah, that'd be fine, it'd be great, that, then we can just pinpoint it and, and send it on. And contact Matt Machado, our Public Works Director, and Steve Wiesner, too.
Yeah, because everybody I know from my time at the county is, is gone and retired now. And then we also have acacia trees growing between the road and the new guardrail, which is an interesting one. And, you know, they've been there a couple of years, and they're going to start impacting traffic. I mean, they're sprouts, but you know, they're maybe ten feet high now. So I'll send you that location, general location also. And then get back, get, and then maybe we can talk about Rolling Woods there, you know, we're up by, just north of Sims Road there.
Yeah, and James put, you know, it's Fifth District at Santa Cruz County.
Yeah, I've got you, I'll get it to you this evening, appreciate it, and thank you for hosting the septic presentation, I appreciated that.
You're welcome. Well, thank.
The email for the office is just put into the chat, so folks can take a look there, and I believe I'll repeat it at the end of the meeting. Any additional questions? I don't see any hands raised. Oh, I do see one, okay, Jamie Ackman, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. I, in light of the discussion about roads repair funding, and I know there's quite a bit of money for damaged roads, which is, you know, good news for fire damaged communities, like those of us in San Lorenzo Valley. But I am wondering how the recent changes in funding at RTC might affect the Highway Nine Safe Schools Corridor project, and whether we anticipate there might be any delays to that because of the funding changes that were recommended at the recent RTC Commission meeting.
No, and we, we have pushed very hard for that, and we got that in Measure D to approve Highway Nine. So that was great to, that we had for planning and engineering. That, as a matter of fact, that project is scheduled, it's on the schedule of Caltrans, which I referred to earlier. It is probably not going to, it's on their list though for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, I believe. That is, you want to push it up? They, maybe we can get them to do that, but they've got a long list of projects to do. But that's, that's the, the timeframe for that at this point.
Okay, let's see. Any additional questions? Again, can use, you can raise your hand in Zoom, or you can press star nine on your phone if you've called into the meeting tonight. Let's give folks a minute here. Not seeing any additional questions, supervisor, so I will send it over to you to close us out.
Okay, I really, I just want to thank everybody for, for being here tonight. And if you have any further questions, please feel free to contact our office. And I really want to make one more reminder on the PG&E community meetings on December fourteenth and January twelfth regarding the Wood Hall Program. Jam put the chat on, again, I think he just put it on again, in case you missed it. That's really going to be important, you need to opt in, so you need to contact them. You do not need to be at these meetings to opt in, but just let them know. And we, if you have any questions, just contact our office too, and we will assist you in that. So other than that, I do hope that each and every one of you have a great holiday season. And as always, you can reach our office through email, fifthdistrict@stancruzcounty.us. Or call us at four five four twenty-two hundred. With that, I want to just wish everybody a tremendous holiday season, and thank you for joining us tonight. We think these are, and pass the word if you can about some of the things that are being done, or if you can remember some of the details of the septic systems, or the OTS, or whatever they're called, that'd be great. And if they have, anybody has any questions, just let us, let us know. Have a great holiday season, everyone, and good evening.